I'm going to call the meeting order at six o'clock for the regular meeting of the Pong City Board of Education, and we'll start with the flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this July board meeting, we seek your grace and wisdom. Bless our discussions with empathy and understanding that we may make decisions in the best interest of our students. Guide us to foster an inclusive and nurturing environment where every child can thrive. Grant us the strength and patience to overcome challenges and the vision to see the potential in each student. We express our gratitude for the dedicated educators, staff, and parents who contribute to our school's success. May our collective efforts be filled with compassion and lead to a brighter future for our students. Amen.
Mr. Wizem?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Rowland? Or Mrs. Tree? Mrs. Zimberstein? Here. And we're just going to roll into this superintendent's report with this being the board discussion. Bring it in, Amy.
Thank you. Okay. Let me just pull up here. Hope everyone's having a great Monday. I'll just kind of give you a little overview of what we're dealing with right now. Just wanted to do a little touch on what we're doing with staffing right now in the district. Right now, we do have a secondary position open at the beginning. And business information tech at the high school, that's a career tech certified individual. We have a U.S. history at the high school, looking at that as also a possible coaching position for us. We have a head's high school girls wrestling coach that's currently still open for the district. We also are seeking counselors. We'll take counselors, any counselor we got, we'll take them. What counselors? Our district goals have a counselor at every side. Right now, we have to share at our own mystery sites. We have been fortunate to have one per grade level at the secondary level, but we've actually had some internal discussions on, you know, is our ratio where we want it to be as far as counselors? You know, this board's desire to seek special education teachers, we would do the same thing with counseling, we'd have an abundance, we could take. But talking to Amy, we can staff it and roll the beginning of school where we're at right now. I mean, Jennifer and her team has done an outstanding job hiring. Right now, we're looking at about 64 certified positions filled by the time school rolls out. So if you're counting, it's about 20% of our certified positions will be branded along to the public schools that's coming here. But I will say we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other schools, because Jennifer's getting those spots filled for us. We have a science at the high school open. We've talked about if we could afford and be able to bring on additional athletic strength. Currently, this district employs one athletic trainer for every extracurricular that we have in the evenings, and she gets a little stretch stint during the athletic seasons. Oh, sorry, there's so much work. It is an open meeting, they're welcome to come on in. But we talked about that. The one thing about the athletic trainer, this is not new to this board, that position has been open, I think, since the inception of you guys bringing on your own Pong City Public Schools athletic trainer. You've been, the desire of this board has always to have more than one, to have two, and just we've just never been able to fill that. Jennifer and her team have looked into other models in other districts across the U.S. state. A lot of schools contract out, local hospitals carry to colleges. I just think due to our location, we're pretty fortunate to have the athletic trainer that we have, so we've been looking at ways to, her time up there in the day, so she's more available in the afternoons and evenings on our extracurriculars or taking off and going game musters. Support positions, obviously, this is not going to come as any surprise to this board. We're still looking for bus drivers. Currently, what we've done is tried to be very creative in tackling this issue with bus drivers. We have teachers that we try to schedule planning periods in the first hour or at the end of the day to help us drive buses. Our desire as a district is obviously one of those teachers in the classroom, but we do have a responsibility and an obligation to make sure that the students get home safely. So we've had a few teachers step up and answer that call of the public that's driving buses in the morning or afternoon.
Can you add on that one, we're making an offer for one of the bus drivers just?
Wow, that's exciting. That's exciting. Well, watch out, lightning could strike from somewhere. It's pretty good. Custodians, we are, we do have a few evenings custodians open, open positions at a few of our elementary schools that we'd like to have filled before the start of school. Jason and Tony are working on that. Teachers assistants, we're, we had a very successful job fair here just a few weeks ago. Amy, our special services director, had a number of onsite interviews and discussions for special MTA's and pairs. And we've been able to send a few job offers for that. And you should see on your board personnel actually report a number of TAs that we'd like to bring back, starting in August. Obviously, here's the one thing I do want to make sure that this board's aware of, and something that we're communicating with our principals, and just something we need to be mindful of, is with the new pay raise that's coming from the state for teachers, that's going to have some Title I impacts. Right now, we do pay a number of personnel with Title I, certified personnel, and every one of those are going to be eligible for that pay raise. And the Title I money is federal money, so the feds did not allocate more dollars for a pay raise, so we have to absorb those in those Title I budgets. So our principals are working with Brenda and her team in the finance office to determine what kind of impact that's going to have on their budgets. We may have to make some decisions on, do we maintain the same staffing levels at our elementarys? Do we need to be more creative with assistants or certified personnel at some of our elementary schools and secondary schools? But we're still kind of ironing that out right now, as we work through what our state allocations are going to be compared to what our Title I allocations from the feds are going to be.
So we don't have a rough guess yet?
On state allocations? Yes, we have a rough guess. It's about 2.9 million on what?
What's our cost though? That's really our rough guess?
On rough cost?
On Title I?
On the Title I cost. I don't have that off the top of my head right now, but that is something we've been talking about, discussing internally on, because there's a number of schools like Trout's East that we just need to be really careful on how we're allocating this Title I dollars and where our priorities are. Is it going to be staffing? Is it going to be programs? Software?
Are there certain Title, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there certain Title I positions, like those that have to be certified staffed?
That's a good question. Not necessarily. It's, this board's always had times that philosophy that, you know, let the principals know what they're building needs, what they best utilize those funds for. You know, they really have an impact on, or an emphasis on math and reading results. They would see a lot in reading interventionists.
Those are your most trained.
Yeah, typically, they are, and they have the most years of experience. What years of experience come in through spots, so.
Thank you.
Just some good stuff. I mean, Ben's team, I mean, that's where finance and HR really have to work together and make sure that we have the best use of our funds in that deal. I want to talk about registration numbers. This is our registration numbers as of four o'clock today. You can see I put how many students have registered to this point and what our goal at each site is as far as numbers there. Right now, we're about 1,500 students, so what I told everyone this morning in Super Dins, that it would be a grade three A school in Oklahoma if you started the school tomorrow. But I think right now, we're doing a pretty good job with where we want to be this early in the registration cycle. We just started right after the 4th of July, so I think our parents and families are answering the call to get their students up here and get enrolled. Our principals are pushing hard on their school individual Facebook pages, remind notifications, push notifications to get parents out, to get them registered and registrations in. We would be registering all the way up to our first in school on this. But you can see there are kind of our numbers, just kind of tracking where we're going with that. Any questions there? Okay. Just a little housekeeping. I told you I have to do part of being a brand new superintendent in Oklahoma, there's some stuff I have to do. My first thing starts July 25th and 26th, that's the next week. I'm doing a class on basic school finance. It's kind of sounds funny, talking about that in front of the floor in the opening meeting, but yeah, I'm going to learn all the basics of school finance. And then the next day, that one will be in Oklahoma City in person, and the next day will be a Zoom meeting, and they're going to bring in each of the department leads and the State Department of Education through Zoom meetings. So I'll have our various department heads from Pong City Public Schools in those meetings with me at various times. I'm still waiting on the agenda to be sent out, to be able to plan that day out, and that's just more of an after-dinner thing. And then we'll have one meeting on the Zoom on board superintendent relations. I know that's something I can grow and improve on, and then board meeting laws for the open meeting acts and all the different implications we have, and see a little column on that. Now, what's also interesting is on July 31st, I have to attend the McCrell New Administration, Administrator Evaluation Training, which this is in state, the state statute that all new superintendents have to do this, but our district doesn't subscribe to this evaluation model. We're a Marzal, we're a field, a Marzal model. So I'm going to take as much as I can from that lesson, or session, but I don't think that will have any changes or shift up our direction that we've gone with since I left here from being a principal about 12 years ago. So we're going to keep sticking with the Marzal model. And then I have to be assigned a mentor, and I got Dr. Melissa Ayman from Christian Public Schools to sign some A she is going to be my mentor superintendent, and we already reached out and had some conversations, and we have plans to meet up at the OSSB conference here in August. So we'll have a good time to introduce one another and bounce questions that I ask. What's kind of funny is, this is first second year as a superintendent. And I think that's what you're going to see in the education moving forward, is that there's not a lot of experience anymore, and if we do find that experience, I'm going to be leeching off of it as much information as I can from the board. This is a very short superintendent's board report, but any questions from the board?
Do we need to meet her in August so we can?
Yes. Yeah, I want to introduce her to a select few of board members, and I'm still deciding which two I want to, where to meet.
That's why I think you're on.
In August. Yeah.
We have the item number four for the consent agenda. There is a motion required for the approval of a consent agenda. For his amendment, board members may have a call for vote on each of the items listed on the consent agenda. Looks like we have the minutes for our June 12th meeting, special budget hearing meeting, and the rate of award meeting, as well as contracts and agreements under $20,000 to be in a surplus resolution, and our can motion.
Move.
Make the motion, Nancy is second, open the vote. Mr. Wizem?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mrs. Rowland? Mrs. Tree?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein? Hi. All right, and we'll move on to number five, action items. A motion is required for these. It looks like consideration to take action on following district financial reports A through R.
Good meeting. Sure. I had leave, and then I had to go back. I mean, sure, I had to get.
Okay, I would like a separate vote on item O, activity fundraiser request.
Okay. So we're looking at?
Hold it.
A through R, take out those.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion as presented.
Can we add the P as well? Oh, sorry, N, sorry.
N. Oh, yeah, yeah, because we don't. Okay.
Say it again.
I mean, N, okay, so, hang on. So Dawn made a motion, Robin has asked for O to be pulled out, and Nancy has asked for P, I mean, N to be pulled out.
Pulled out or pulled out?
Not pulled out. Pulled out for a separate vote.
For a separate vote.
Would you ask me?
I was playing wide.
Okay. So what about P? This is the other?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, which is.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do you need to make so? Yeah, I'll vote. For A, like, this is just to pull it out, we have to vote to pull it out?
We're going to vote on A through, do we have to vote to pull it out? Yeah.
I made a motion, we moved from A to N in Q, R.
P.
P, Q on.
Correct. And Judy seconded. Now call for vote. Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Mrs. Tree? Mrs. Zimberstein? Hi. Mr. Wizem? Hi. And now considering taking action on O, N and O.
Okay, the reason I would like a separate vote, there are still a lot of fund, activity fundraiser requests that we have not received. Several of the schools have not turned them in. There's still some confusion on some of the others. It will probably mean that we'll have to have another special meeting if that be the case, so be it, but I just don't think we can approve this stuff across the board that we have to be considering.
Okay, so Robin has made a motion.
Do you want to table it, or do you want to kill it, or what do you want to do?
I would like to table it, yes.
To table this for a special board meeting? That's a motion on the table, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who's going to table this?
Second. Call for the vote. Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Mrs. Tree?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Hi.
Mr. Wizem?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
All right, and then there are now one, two. The second item under number five is a consider to take action on adopting a school hours policy for the 23, 24 school year. This is what we do every year.
Aren't we going to do Nancy's then?
No, we, we put tape together.
Oh, you put it together, okay.
Yeah, sorry. This item number two is the school hour policy that we review every year.
Yeah.
Nancy, you made the motion, do I have a second?
I guess I'm, I'm still on N. What was the reason we tabled that?
N is the?
They go together.
They go together, it's activity funds, budget, more than.
You just have a gun to, you have a gun to stuff in on that one?
We have a gun on it, it's easier to run them all. I'll table them for now and resume all at once.
Okay.
So we had a motion, myself, and then Dawn seconded on number two. Are you guys okay? Do you want to vote?
Is that 10,000 hours?
Is this 10,000 hours instead of?
It gives the option to, right? Okay. Yeah, call for the vote. Mrs. Tree?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Hi.
Mr. Gibson?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mr. Wizem? Number four, consider to take action on appointing an internal activity review committee for activity absences for the 23, 24 school year. And Adam can answer any questions if you have some.
Motion, Dr.?
Second.
Adam, is all we're doing changing names on this?
On the number four, you're, we have this committee every year. We have students that have excess of 10 activities per calendar year. They can have their attendance reviewed by this committee for either approval of additional school activity days.
And since we put titles, we don't have to change names. Correct.
Are you looking at number five? Number five is the name changes.
Well, number four, though.
Yeah, the recommendation is.
Principal and athletic director.
Principal, principal, and athletic director.
Yeah, no, but we do, we have to approve this every year.
But we don't have to approve name changes.
Correct. I'm sorry.
Just, okay. Any other questions? All right, Nancy made a motion, and Dawn seconded, call for the vote. Oh, Dawn called? Sorry, I had that one. Okay, I had that one. Mrs. Tree?
Hi.
Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mr. Wizem?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Hi.
Number five, consider to take action on board policy changes deemed necessary due to personnel changes, and things were included in the report packet. Does anybody have questions before we can have a motion? Okay, all right, any questions? Go ahead, make a question.
Second.
Mrs. Tree? Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mr. Wizem?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Hi.
Number five, consider to take action on board policy changes deemed necessary due to personnel changes, and things were included in the report packet. Does anybody have questions before we can have a motion? Okay, all right, any questions? Go ahead, make a question.
Second.
Mrs. Tree? Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mr. Wizem?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Hi.
Mrs. Tree?
Is this a fishy making the super king?
Yep, that was it. Snuck it by ya.
Item number six, consider to take action on meal pricing increases for the 23, 24 school year. And it has listed there, and a table, the current price, the proposed price for each review, and just here to answer any questions. For, for. Read.
Hi, Chair. Hi. You know, thirty-some years, this has always been one of the most difficult things to do on the full pricing. It's the only charge that we have any control of, the rest of the USDA says. So full price for those who don't qualify for free or reduced meals. So we've been doing a nickel a year for a long time, but as, we have a tool from the USDA, and we put in our information about the cost of goods, the price of goods, labor, all this, and they were recommending that we don't go any lower than $4.10. I'm, we don't have to do anything, because two years ago, they made a ruling that if we have a positive fund balance by January 1st, we don't have to increase pricing. But looking at our contracts that we have on everything that we do, which you, you've seen a lot of, we're going to see a pretty large increase in the cost of doing business. And so I felt that it was a good time to set those prices up. When you, when you look at it, a full now, the high school student gets $3.25, most of them won't pay more than that for a cup of really bad coffee. So we're trying to keep that, you know, east and west will get three, and then our breakfast will still stay around two, and two hundred and five, which is a really good deal, and that's, that's a lot of food for that price. So I recommend this reluctantly, just because I'm concerned about the families that don't qualify for reduced, and they may have three or four kids, and that's an impact on them. I've always been very concerned about that, and the national average what they're recommending, and what we get from the federal government is 425 for a three-day. So 285 for reduced. So this, this is kind of, don't want to do it, but I think we're going to have to.
Chair, how do we compare to other schools in the surrounding area?
We're about the same. Doing, we're about the same.
Even with the increase?
Yeah, and some of them will manage on contracts, so it's a totally different thing. The thing is, the students pay more on their own national contracts. So as well, we're looking nationally as 450. So $3 is pretty reasonable. We think we buy pretty good, we buy pretty smart, and, and our secret is volume.
I see a quick question. Do you, so you do anticipate that we won't need to have an increase next year, hopefully?
Hopefully. I really don't, I don't want to do this, but it just depends on the market. Because everything has affected everything else. Even the price of, the price of fuel is affected so much, and then the price of raw materials is affected so much too. Packaging is very expensive, so it's, it's just, has tripled down. I hesitate a whole lot in, in increase, in increase this size, but I have to answer the USDA, State Department of Education, why I need to increase it up to 425, and I feel I'm very on solid grounds and I'll do that. It makes up about 15% of our own business. And so they, they look at it, I look at it in the worksheet, as us creating about $40,000.
Thank you very much. Nancy's made a motion, enter can it a second?
Second.
Seconding by Robin.
Thank you.
Open the vote. Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Hi.
Mrs. Tree?
Hi.
Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Item seven, consider to take action on engagement of Stepchild and Johnson E.L.L.C. to represent Pong City Public Schools District?
Yeah, so there's a lot of legalese language in there. This is an ongoing legal matter that this district, Pong City Public Schools, has been engaged with, with a number of other school districts across the state of Oklahoma. This goes back all the way from 2004 through 2014, when it was discovered that the citizens of Pong City Public School District were overpaying on localized warrant taxes, and the state was dispersing that to other districts, essentially overpaying other districts and underpaying Pong City and the number of other schools across Oklahoma. This has gone all the way to the Oklahoma Supreme Court. We've had the state auditor involved. We've had three different state superintendents. Well, this one made the third state superintendent to be involved in this matter. The reason we have to enter into a new agreement is the attorney that was representing the districts, including Pong City Public Schools, has shifted into a new firm, so we just need to button up the agreement that we will transfer that work to continue with Molly, as she represents the district, and hopefully, in getting those funds that were intended for Pong City Public Schools used back to the community of Pong City Public Schools. So my recommendation is that we continue forward with the other school districts and approve this agreement, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question?
Yep.
Will we lose money in the fact we've used the other attorneys for 10 years on this? The fact that attorneys leaving, we're basically following the attorney that's assigned to the case. Are we going to lose money?
We're going to have two attorneys.
Say it again?
We're going to have two attorneys. Much more so works for Crow and Dunleavy. Molly works for.
But that's, that's the point. With the attorney leaving, why wouldn't we just stay with Crow and Dunleavy?
The, I think she's running point on this. I mean, she's the one that's provided, she's been the one, my point of contact.
So is the cost is extra?
No.
No, it's not going to, it's not an additional. Now, let me answer your original question. I think, you know, when you spend money on attorneys, there's always that risk that the judgment doesn't fall all the way. So yeah, we look at that as a loss then, but.
Well, but that's.
I think we always, I think we have an obligation to the taxpayers to try to get those funds that they pay back to our community.
But with the attorney switching, are we starting over on anything?
No, that's a good question. No, we're not. This continues the ball.
Any other questions? Enter can a motion? Mr. Wizem?
Hi.
Mr. Riley?
Hi.
Mrs. Rowland?
Hi.
Mrs. Tree?
Hi.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Hi.
So we have some contracts. Item eight is consider to take action on following contracts and agreements, and these are the ones that are in agreement, right? Okay. A, consider to take action on hiring and following individuals with high-end teachers So, we have some contracts, item eight is consideration and take action on following contracts and agreements. And these are the ones that are. Um, A, consideration and take action on hiring the following individuals with adjunct teachers as specified, and they're listed there as soon. Do I need to read those out? Sandra Holberg, elementary. Brooklyn Raper, elementary. Micah Havens Estrada, US history, Oklahoma history, government economics. Cory Pincher, English. Kelly Garcia, art. Stephen Gory, art. Amanda Bruce, elementary. Sarah Kane Hollingsworth, elementary. Shelley Jacobs, elementary. Mackenzie Loughlin, middle of science. Casey Love, psychology sociology. Angela, Angela Loughlin, elementary. Casus Montano, physical education, health and safety. Andrea Nail, US history, Oklahoma history, government economics. Kumari Raviti, career and technology business. Mike Seals, music. Alicia Smith, physical science. Elizabeth Stewart, brain.
I've got a question on A. Do we want to do questions now or do it all?
I think it's probably better to entertain a question while we're talking about it.
Okay. My question on A, do all these people have degrees, generally?
No, they're adjuncts.
They're, they're, this is a combination. So, the, the term adjunct can be two different things. One is, sure. So, um, and I can, an adjunct means two different things. Forever, we've been able to adjunct a teacher if they are certified and they're teaching outside of their certified area. That, that group is in this as well. Um, and with the new law last year, the state of Oklahoma will now allow us to hire teachers that are not degree. And honor ward has said they have to be actively working on their degree. So, those, so this was a combination of all of those people.
So, how long do you? Okay, the ones that have degrees, is there a timeframe on them that they have to get in the, in the right zone?
No, the ones that are, the ones that are already degree and certified in an area, we can do this as long as we need to.
Okay, then, some of these don't have degrees.
Correct.
How long do they have to get a degree?
This, according to the state, the state says they never have to have a degree. Pong City Public Schools says they have to be actively pursuing a degree, and that's what I argued in the committee meeting was that form that we decided. I'm going to, they're going to have to prove to me that they've made progress on their degree. Um, I'm, it's more of a probably executive session discussion, but I could go through and tell you where people are. Of the adjuncts that don't have a degree, we have many of them that are going to graduate in this upper of this school year. So, they're not all that far, but we have some that are physically, they won't, won't be, um, will go from adjunct to an emergency by junior year. And so, um, they're not all that far along, but they've all, they're all working on their degree.
Did the degree people have to take a test for that subject matter?
No.
So, you could teach math and, yeah, English major.
That's true. Yeah.
And you don't even have to ever get your degree, as long as you're still working for it.
And you don't even have to be working for it if you're.
Yeah, according to the state, you don't have to have one at all.
What she wants, wants.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the ones that are degree.
The ones that are degree.
They don't, do they ever have to get a, a degree in that subject to teach?
Thank, thank you, Mike.
Just the ones that are non-certified.
That is correct.
Okay. And that's.
They don't have to have a degree.
Well, they have to, where they have to have a degree.
That does. According to Pong City Public Schools, when I make that hire, our state, it is our board's intention that you will finish your degree, that you are actively, now, the state of Oklahoma does not say that. The state of Oklahoma just said as long as a school board needs their experts in their field, we can hire them. And they don't have to have a degree.
But to answer Robin's question, there's no set time that they have to get a degree, but they do have to be working toward it.
That is correct.
That should progress each year.
So, that's why.
At least, did you say three credit hours?
Yeah, yeah, everybody's.
At least one, one, three credit hours class or something, or at least.
Well, I mean, some classes are two, but when I look at your transcripts, I'll, I'll be them this year. And then before we hire them next year, I'll be able to compare that they've made progress on their degree.
If they haven't.
And when I say progress, I mean, it means pass a class. It doesn't mean they failed. That's not progress. It means you have, you have to make progress.
And so, what we're agreeing to is if they have not successfully taken a course, you're gone.
That would be what I think is.
I mean, is that?
Because it appears that, there's a bigger picture here. So, Oklahoma is the only state in the United States that does this, all right? It's just us. Nobody else does this. So, the other reason we want them to actively pursue their degree is because we're the title one school that's paid with favor. We have lots of things paid with federal dollars. So, we want to be able to show the feds that we are making sure they're making progress. We're getting their degree. Because once they have that degree, I can certify them. And so, that's an Oklahoma thing. Nobody else in the United States does that, just us. So, we're trying, we, Pong City Public Schools is trying to do better, in my opinion, than what the state says, because we're trying to get where they need to be so that we cross all of our Ts and all of our Is with, with the feds, not just what Oklahoma says.
Same purpose for local control.
So, so the non-certified, non-degrees, do they get the teacher's pay raise? The, the one that the state just.
The high school. The ones that are not certified, um, they, okay, if you are an adjunct that is not certified, you are not on the certified teaching base. So, you're considered support employee, and we have our lay for that.
So, they won't get the, the pay raise.
That is, that is, that is correct, as long as that is like.
People live, been five years taking three hours a year. Okay.
They say they've done it for five years, because this was, this is just the second school year that they can do that.
Does anybody have any questions about A?
I think you're good.
Oh, yeah. Uh, B is an agreement with Anderson Flooring Enterprises for lag improvement at a cost of $16,900. Does anybody have any questions? Moving on to C, agreement with Lomart Cummings and Hyatt for attorney services. Um, hourly rate of $275 per hour as needed, total cost to be none more than $5,000. Any questions? Item D, agreement with CPWG for go guarding and software. Cost is for free, $1,000 per year license at a cost of $27,600 from Form 33. And Ryan can answer a question. Item E, agreement with Cross Petroleum Products to provide. Estimated cost is $17,500.
Who already approved your, uh, new speaker system for a year?
Oh. I was going to say.
You don't, you don't have to play that game anymore.
Item F, agreement with Daktronics Incorporated for control system for the Robson Field House. The agreement includes training on the system, power and control system drawings that apply your warranty for birth. Total cost is $14,390 from the company's. Any questions on that? G, agreement with Kyle and Barry Foods to provide beverages for the 23-24 school year. And this is at a cost of $255,000 for white and chocolate milk, orange juice, apple juice, and red Diamond tea.
I should know this.
You have a question?
I should know it.
Okay. Milk does not go in the line, right, Jeff?
Yes.
It does, it does go.
It's included.
Okay, so this is just to give us the milk here?
That's just the milk we use.
Oh, okay.
It's just a contract with Dak.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, item F, agreement with JNB Mechanical LLC to provide repairs for child nutrition equipment. And they're providing repairs to refrigeration freezer units as needed, and the estimated cost is $15,000.
I do have a question for Jeff. Is that freezer and stuff, is high school still working, sitting outside?
It's not working right now.
I mean, is it going to work or?
It does work, yeah.
Keep it or?
No, it, it does, it does work. A lot of dust from the construction guy in the last couple of months and losing the pressure. I would like to do it, but I'm just going to get a new door instead.
We need to look at that, we need to talk about it down the road.
Yeah.
Before you do anything. We need to talk about that properties.
The operations guy.
And, and, Jeff, I'm understanding that, and I want to ask you, if you wanted new one, why don't you get a new one?
Well, this one still works.
Oh.
They're, they're about.
I've got some other things I want to talk about.
Twenty, thirty thousand dollars, and it still works. We just need the compressor when the dust settles.
So, how much is the new door and the compressor?
The new door would probably be about, well, compressor is about five hundred.
Why, what?
Just not as much as the helping you, it's going to cost once I have five.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, the door, the door has a, a sensor in it that we use for alarm system, so that's a bit more expensive. I have a value purchase. But I've got someone who wants to do it. Yeah, I'm, I don't, we need every bit of adequate storage. We have an alarm on it, and it goes off every, every fifteen minutes on my phone, and it has for a month. So, I'm ready to.
Somebody's messing with it, it just goes off?
Yeah, it, it just needs a new compressor. It needs cleaned, it wasn't cleaned. Stirred up a lot of dust right there in that, that, that area, so that area is kind of, rough area, right? Yeah, I, I took a new one.
On, at this item H, that it says as needed, uh, repairs, so these are repairs that need to be done right away, but just anticipated repairs that it needs within a year.
Yeah, we, we contract with, with them for auto refrigeration and freezer, so the district doesn't handle that. And, uh, oh, I probably call them four times a week. We've got close to sixty units that we keep going. I called them three times today. So, it's, they're pretty good to work with, and they're, they're trying to be reasonable. I, I, when he gets this hot, we're calling them.
I, memorandum of understanding between Pong City Schools and Pioneer Technology Center for Drawback Recovery Share Program. Any questions on I? Um, J is a vote for Rick Scott Construction Incorporated for repairs at elementary. Total cost is $17,900. Coming from the building funds adjacent. Any questions? I P K, agreement with Solistry for professional development for East Middle School staff. And this will be funded by the School Improvement Grant, and the purple, and the cost is $26,000. So, Dr. Hawkins is here to answer any questions about that. So, I would entertain a motion to approve A through K. Don has made the motion support. And not, uh, Robin second, I think.
We, I, I call not, not every one of these in the property.
Okay.
So, most of our questions were already answered.
All right. Call for the vote. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Tree.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimshin.
Aye.
Mr. Mc.
Aye.
Item nine, motion and vote convening an executive session for the following purposes: to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment personnel attached to the personnel board, to discuss the voteations, to discuss the purchase or appraisal of the property.
I will make a motion.
Nancy made a motion.
Second.
Second by Robin. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Tree.
Mrs. Zimshin. Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley. Aye.
Executive session. All right, we are returning to open session. And recital by the board president, that minutes of the executive session were kept by the board members' part and will remain confidential. Item twelve, consideration and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment personnel. Any discussion before I take a motion? Don has made the motion for approval. Take a second.
I'll second.
Nancy second. Call for the vote.
I second.
Give him one.
Mrs. Zimshin.
Aye.